It's 5:30. We're going to go ahead and call the July 10, 2023 City Council Meeting to Order. We'll start with roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Buska.
Yes.
Fortune.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Kreener.
Yes.
Next, we'll act on the consent agenda. That includes approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from June 19, 2023, approval of application for tax abatement under the urban revitalization plan for Sarah and Gary Gooder.
Second?
Buska.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Next, our staff reports. We'll start with Public Works.
Both Seventh Street and Downtown Projects have been started and are going well so far. They're planning to start installing Storm's sewer up Airport Road sometime this week. So there might be some closures while they're doing that. They're uncertain at this moment. And then they're in Phase 1 of the Downtown project with Phase 2 scheduled to start next Monday. And Phase 2 is from CUSB to hometown accounting. BRZ coatings are planning to start the tower project on August 14th, and I've sent letters out to everybody that has equipment up there to get them removed before that date. And the pipe and intake structures came in today for the Second Avenue West project, and the Street Department plans to start that next week, and will have the road closed from Third Street West to Fourth Street West during working hours. I think they plan to open it up during the evenings. And then the sidewalk replacement project will be finished up at the wastewater plant this week. This was a budgeted project and a much-needed upgrade for out there.
No kidding?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
One question need on that pile out there. Is that going to all be used for berms and stuff around the ponds that they're digging?
Correct.
Okay, because I bet somebody was approached about if any of that stuff was going to be for sale.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll have any left over. Right now, they plan to use it all.
That's what I told them.
Next, Police report chief.
Since the last meeting, the only thing I have to report is the fair went well. Really no incidents. And everything's been going good around town. The officer's been busy with some traffic and their own investigations. Looks like July's going to be very busy.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Any new laws that we need to be aware of July 1?
Not right now, anything that's really significant.
Yeah, okay. Did they pass a cell phone law in Iowa? Was that effective July 1 or my?
I have not gotten any updates on that yet.
Okay.
So I mean, usually any legal updates, we'll get an email on, and I have not seen anything yet.
Thank you. Next, Administration.
The June financial reports were enclosed in a packet. We also included the function report. That shows nine different functions, and those are the ones that we actually need to legally be under by the function when you guys are looking at it. Line items can be over with the budget, but the total function has to be under. For example, the public safety is the police, fire, and LEC. So combined, they all need to be under that function, be under the budget. Expenses for the year came in at 83%. Revenue was at 95. Just a reminder that the next council meeting will be the 24th, and the auditors will start here that day as well. We're exploring how to invest the bond proceeds until the funds are needed. We also started doing a sweep account to maximize our interest earnings. So checks that are outstanding sit in kind of the sweep account as a clear checking account that just sweeps over from the money market. Also, Anthony Sturm has accepted the position of deputy clerk, and he'll start in the next few weeks.
Good.
All right, thank you. Committee updates.
They're this week.
Huh?
They're all this week.
They're all this week, okay. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience, and this portion of the agenda is for comments that are not related to one of the items listed on the agenda. Anybody? Jason, you're good? Yeah, okay. All right, we'll move on to the regular business part of the agenda. Item 1, Michelle Barness and Aaron Deeter with Upper Explorer Land Regional Planning Commission to present proposal for comprehensive plan update. If you can come right on up here if you want. I think maybe the microphone is probably shut off.
I guess I do have some copies. Do you need some? Okay. Let's kind of go through. And I do have the actual proposal as well if you want to look at that.
Thank you.
You need to get pretty close to this?
I think we're good. I think we're good, yeah.
Okay, I'll try to talk loud. So, well, thanks for having us. Appreciate you guys reaching out. I guess I can walk you through our process a little bit, and if you have any questions about how we do our planning, we're happy to answer them. Did you have enough time in mind that, you know, I should kind of be sensitive to that?
What are you thinking?
I can probably do it in like 5, 10 minutes. I mean, is that seen? Okay. Okay, well, I'll walk you through the one that says, "That is not Cresco. It's a general retail venture." Everyone's staring at that. Although, the proposal's quite fancy, I think. I'll walk you through what we do. So we do smart planning. It just comes down from state statute. They provide some guidance. And so it's stuff that you're talking about in your communities anyway. So it's things like housing, your infrastructure, transportation, economic development, and so on. So we've always framed our plans to make sure to touch on each of these key issues. And all of the meetings are going to also touch on each of these key issues. Smart planning also sets out some principles, and it's kind of meant to guide the overall planning process on how you do it. And maybe it becomes a focus in certain ways. So those would be things like renewable energy and energy efficiency, housing diversity, expanded transportation options. So these are just things that the state saw as good guides for all communities to be thinking about when making their long-range planning. So planning for rural communities. I get around to five counties. Upper Explorer Land covers all five counties in northeast Iowa, including Howard County. And I just wanted you guys to kind of see a list of some of the things I've seen come up in recent years. And I'm very curious, what strikes you as some of your key issues? I could have a meeting with Nikki and Michelle. We talked a little bit about what's been going on. But a lot of things that have been coming up recently in my planning would be things like downtown revitalization. A lot of the small communities around here are thinking about that. Childcare issues, housing issues are on the forefront. Technology that comes in different ways. People have been looking into broadband a lot. They're also talking about energy and some other newer issues. A lot of communities are looking at, you know, waffability and other-ish trails, stuff like that. And then you kind of have your typical economic development discussions that are ongoing. So we need to retain a workforce, attract workforce. That comes up a lot. So those are some of the things that we've heard as we've been doing our engagement. And I'm guessing we'll probably hear from folks here too, in different ways. So a little bit about our process. It's a combination of behind-the-scenes work that I'll largely be doing. So I'm the regional planner for Upper Explorer Land. Aaron Deeter is a transportation planner, but he's had his hands in a variety of things over the years, and I do get him involved. He often comes to meetings to assist me. He helps with other things around the planning. So and one of the things I'll be doing heavily is trying to get you up-to-date information on your community. A lot of that's looking at data from the US Census. And that's great, because some of that's starting to come out now. The 2020 census information was really delayed, but it's starting to slowly come out. So you want to look at your demographics, and you want to look at your housing information and stuff like that. Also, we can look at workforce and business information. I can delve into a lot of that detail. We do kind of a wide view of where you're at. What's your transportation system like? What kind of housing do you have? Do you have natural resources? Do you have agriculture? So I just gather that from a lot of sources that I'm used to going back to, and then we try to present it in different ways. One thing is we have a steering committee, and I'll kind of get it out in a few pages. And the other thing is we do these public engagement meetings. So I'm in the background gathering information, and then we're presenting it to folks to give me feedback and help kind of illuminate, what is this information mean for Cresco? So if you turn to the next page, one of the things we do for public input, and I think this is a very important part of the process, is we do a visioning. So you try to get the word out for social media, websites, emails, person-to-person, and you try to get, you know, kind of hopefully diverse group to a public meeting. And we do something called appreciative inquiry, and I think it's really simple. And I keep going back to it because it's a nice way of keeping things positive. See, you ask people to kind of, let us know about your values. You might have people from different backgrounds in the room, and all of a sudden you start to realize you have a lot of, or a lot of which value. And then after that, we ask them to dream. So instead of kind of, everyone is going to come to comprehensive planning, including officials and staff and the public, with some things they want to get at. But the dreaming is about just saying, like 20 years down the road, what would you like Cresco to be? Let's just go there first. So you kind of get on common grounds, and then you delve into the data. What is our infrastructure? What are our needs? But the visioning's really fun. And then if you go to the next page here, we're going to want to try to gather what you just call the challenges and the strengths of your community. And it's going to be, again, for all these elements we incorporate in our plan. But I've posted what I submitted to you, a couple different ways of doing that. We could do one-on-one interviews and chatting with the clerks. That came up as one thing that might help get down to some of the different issues. I always do focus groups. So a focus group is, I bring them some of this information we gathered from the city and the research, and we get knowledge experts. We get you guys, maybe planning commissioners, people from the steering committee we form, and we get down into it, because I can't really understand what's going on with the data unless I hear from you guys. So the focus groups are really like having conversations and looking at the information, and that helps me quite a bit. And then another really important part of our process is a community survey. So that's pretty typical of planning, and I like to get your feedback about what is best in the survey to make sure it's relevant. And we usually keep it out there for a month or two, really try to get some responses. It's hard, but we've got some strategies for doing that. And it's essential that you, the whole planning process, you keep it in the public view, whether it's press release, a survey, you're putting flyers out, the postcards out of the community. And we're used to doing that. We're willing to help with that. But it's important that people saw you tried to engage, even though it's always a challenge to engage. So we think that's really important. And if you move to the next page, after you've kind of delved into the data, we've done some gathering of it, we've talked with people about it, and tried to learn more, then you get into your goal and strategy setting. And we need guidance from each community we work with about how much you want to get into your strategy plan. So, you know, you got your general goals, and underneath your goals, you have some strategies for accomplishing those goals. Some communities take it to the next step, and they set out actions, usually based on a timeline. So, you know, one-year, two-year timeline, five-year timeline, and so on. And then might even start to identify responsible parties, whether it's within the city itself, or if you're thinking about partners, even funding sources, if it's projects you're looking at. We've done all that, and we're happy to help do that. We do a lot of grant writing on Upper Explorer Line, so at that stage of the planning process, I get all my resources at my organization involved, saying, you know, grants that are good for this type of thing. And we try to talk with each other. So we can put emphasis on that if that's something that the city would want. Some communities don't go down that route. They like to keep more general. So it's totally up to you. Yeah, and I think our process overall is pretty well-balanced. I mean, if I think about how much time I spend really engaging with different groups in the community through the planning process, it's probably more than the research. So, yeah, I do a lot of, you know, I gather the information. We write the plan. That takes some time, but it is a lot of just coordination. And we often work closely with clerks, but on the steering committee, we like to have a few council members. We like to have some planning commissioners, maybe some staff that are willing to take some time to do it. So whether it's law enforcement, or the, you know, superintendents, or whatever it would be, they're great to have. And then we really like to work with you to identify the different groups in your community that we want to maybe target those groups and say, please, can you get involved? So but we do a great job of trying to get that feedback from everybody. You only do this once every 10 years or once every five years, so now's your chance. Get it in their heads and look like you made the effort. So I won't go into detail on the following pages, but you have it in your hand, where I kind of lay out about how many months I think it would take, and kind of laying out those items I just reviewed with you. In the upfront, you're gathering a lot of input. So maybe we do interviews. Another thing I propose is going to community events, like a well-attended community event. We could set up a table for three, four hours and just see if we can get the information out, the survey out and stuff. All that is happening at the beginning, and then after that, we kind of delve into the information, and then you come back to the public later in the process, and you have like open houses to talk about it and stuff. So that's kind of the overall process. It takes, because you're dealing with meetings, you're trying to get public to meetings, you're trying to get officials to meetings, you can't usually do it in three, four months. So six months would be a crunch. One year is quite tough, just because we're also, we got a lot of other projects we work too. And we like to do it where we can get people to the meetings. So often, you're looking at night meetings or after meetings. So yeah, that's kind of why that process goes that way. But I think it allows you to do what you need to do. We'd like feedback from you guys, though. I know that there are some things on your horizon where you're wishing to get the comp plan done and then move on to next step. So you'd have to give us some guidance. And I think we could probably condense it a little bit. So, yeah. So I don't know if I, let me look at my slides and see if I covered everything I had. Yeah. And ultimately, we end up going to the planning commission, presenting the plan, talking about it, and then ultimately the council.
Right.
Perhaps.
Do you think roughly six months to a year?
Yep.
From the time we start?
Yep. And if you had, I mean, I think we're kind of of the mindset that we're open to any recommendations the city has. If you have a particular issue in mind, excuse me, that you need to get at through this process, you could set up, you know, kind of a targeted meeting and talk about that issue. That's okay too. So you have to let me know. There's no real limits. We gave you a proposal, because that's what you got to do to start the conversation. And then we want to hear what you need. So, yeah.
Okay.
We do have, I think you saw in the proposal, but we have a grant that we can apply to our fee to bring it down a little bit, a USDA grant. So that's kind of the nice thing right now. We don't always have that. But I think I said 20% would be the estimated. So, yeah. And we're local, so we're here, and you can come ask. You know, we're easy to pop over if we need to. We know the area really well. I mean, we've been planning for the area for a long time. So we live here too, so very, very much love the region. Do you guys have any questions?
The one comment I had is, your online survey that you have?
Yep.
That probably misses a third, 20 to 30% of the community who aren't online.
We always make sure to have ways that anyone can get a copy of that survey and mail it to us. We'll send, you know, self-addressed stamped envelopes to folks if they want to do it that way. There's always a way that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure those people aren't locked out.
That's a really good point, and we'll work with you on that. And every single process, it's a trick to figure out what the community really needs that way. So yeah, we can work it out.
And the balance has probably changed from what it was 10 years ago.
Yeah. I mean, with that group, usually a press release is pretty good to notify them. You could say hard copies are available at City Hall, the library, you know, community center. You could do that type of thing, and we could just have copies ready for them. It's always a little tricky, because you get out a lot of these surveys, but it's a great opportunity. So we go for it. Try to keep it 10 minutes if you can. But so it's a printed little packet, but if they're willing to take the time, we can do envelopes even, so.
And that's also why you have a different, you know, diversity of types of ways that people can get involved. If they want to come to the public meeting, or if they're more comfortable submitting a survey, or both, or, you know, they want to call you and talk to you directly. You know, there's ways that people can reach us and get feedback.
Yeah, we usually have a website presence of some kind during the planning process, and we like to work with the city too, to get stuff up on your website and social media if you want. So yeah, you have to kind of have a varied approach to connecting with the public.
Right.
And so just, I would find I would be helping with meetings and things, but Michelle probably wouldn't say it about herself, but she's a phenomenal facilitator. So when she's at a meeting, she gets people talking. She facilitates that. She gets people with different viewpoints, kind of having a conversation, which can really talk. So I think we've got a lot of experience and talent.
And she keeps people on the schedule. I can attest to it.
Any other questions?
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Would you like us to stay or?
Yep, you're sure welcome to. You don't have to. It's up to you.
We'll probably stay back then. Let me know if there's anything.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next on the agenda, Jim Holtz with MSA to present a proposal for comprehensive plan update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jim Holtz with MSA Professional Services. We're an engineering and planning consultant. I'm out of Dubuque, but we have four offices in Iowa, Cedar Rapids, Dubuque, Bettendorf, and Ankeny. I've done with the company for 26 years. You know, Michelle mentioned the smart planning principles. I actually helped create those. I'm old enough to have been involved with that, worked with the Rebuild Iowa office to get those established. We have a group of planners internally, about 30 of them, that we meet on a monthly basis by video conference to just talk about upcoming trends, new tools, just what's happening out there, what we're seeing, and bringing other ideas to the group. And then annually, we try to get together in person. COVID kind of threw a little wrench in that, but get together so that we get to know each other even better personally, and go through some more in-depth things that we might want to change with how we approach things. We do a lot of presentations at the Outligous Cities, the American Planning Association Chapter, that sort of thing, on these new trends and topics. One of the things that we've been preaching lately is lean comp plans. You know, in the past, I don't know if your current comprehensive plan is probably a huge, you know, book of about 100 pages and a lot of stuff that just never gets looked at or read. A lot of that is the demographics in the background, and we put that into the appendix now. And so the actual document itself is really, here are the goals, here are the objectives. This is what the community wants to see as their vision for the future, and then an action plan. So our big emphasis in the planning process is that community engagement, which a lot of the things would be similar to what you heard Michelle mention. We like to have a steering committee that will be made up by, you know, people that you choose, but we like to see a cross-section of the community. Sometimes it's planning zoning commission. They're just the steering committee themselves. We like to do a community tour and invite whoever wants to come with us to point things out that maybe is important to them. So we'll just kind of walk around the community, get an idea of what the issues are and that sort of thing. I did meet with Michelle and Nikki as well, understand that you have a desire to potentially look at some annexation in the future. So we'd be looking, you know, definitely looking at your extraterritorial area and see what opportunities for growth are there, what makes sense for annexation and phasing that, and what impacts that's going to have to not only those property owners, but to the city itself in providing services to those areas as well, even though I realize you're providing some services to those areas already. As far as the public engagement, I mentioned the community tour, but we'd also have that steering committee. We'd have a community input workshop where basically you're kind of a traditional meeting at either right here probably, where we have, we do a SWOT analysis with the public, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. What do they like, what do they don't like, what do they see different, and what their vision is for the future. We also have a pop-up event at a local festival, farmer market, something like that. We would talk about that at the first steering committee meeting to actually set when that would be, you know, what event makes the most sense, because that gets us out to the people where they're already at. A lot of your families are not going to be attending our traditional public meetings. They're not going to pay for a babysitter, and they're not going to drag their kids to a meeting. They might participate online, but they still want to talk to somebody in person. So we like to go to where they're already at. It also gives us interaction with the kids too, to find out what they'd like to see happening in the future. So we'd have that pop-up event. We'd have monthly steering committee meetings. And then later down the road, we would have another open house with some draft concepts of what we've heard to get feedback on that. Is this what we heard? Does this make sense to you? Is there any other changes that we need to make before we finalize things? So that's, I mean, that's kind of the process. I don't want to repeat everything Michelle said. The other, I guess, differentiator that we feel that we have is the action plan portion of the comprehensive plan. It's in the implementation plan, but it outlines specific objectives and strategies to achieve your goals. Maybe like two or three per element. You know, there's several elements to the comprehensive plan, and we don't want to overwhelm the community with a bunch of tasks, or else you just get overwhelmed and you don't do anything. You just kind of shut down. So we want to have some very implementable steps that you can take. We do also do a lot of grant writing, grant administration, getting involved with creating TIP districts and that sort of thing. So we'll identify potential sources of funds for specific actions within the comprehensive plan and help you kind of get a sense of what it's going to take to get to where you want to be. We like to put that action plan, and not only will it be in the document, but we'll create it as a separate Excel spreadsheet so that the city can continuously be updating that, because this is really a living document. You're going to want to use it, and we put it right in the document on how to use the document, that you're going to want to look at it annually to see what you've done, what you still need to do, maybe add something. If you've checked some things off, maybe something's changed. You need to add something into that action plan that's going to still meet the vision of the overall comprehensive plan. So that, I guess with that, I didn't just answer any other questions that you might have.
Similar timeframe, it looks like?
Yeah, we set it out for 10 months, but it really depends on how often people can meet, when those events might make the most sense, when you get started. You know, we don't want to, a lot of times, these things, like your budget starts July 1, and that's when you start thinking, oh, okay, now we're going to move forward with your project. Well, in the middle of those 10 months, we've got Thanksgiving and Christmas that show up, and December is usually just a bad month in general. So we can adjust that schedule as we see fit.
Okay. Any questions?
Not this way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Jason Passmore to discuss Rural Housing Assessment Grant Program and possible motion to apply.
Well, you've lined up a whole bunch of meetings. I got more for you. I kind of wish both these guys could have stuck around to kind of hear about this and see how we can coordinate efforts. So the Rural Housing Assessment Grant Program is through the State of Iowa. The fun thing about that is there is a carry at the end of this whole program, and it's $10,000. The cost to get in is $2,500 that I'm asking for tonight from you guys. It is a $5,000 match. I've talked to the folks at SERUS, and they have grant funds to put up half of our match, and that'll be a part of the process too. So put in $2,500, you go through the process, you get 10 grand back, and this is totally focusing on housing. So it's a rural housing assessment. So it plays a part in the whole comprehensive plan. I don't know if it's here or there, or maybe it's part of it. I don't, you know, how that fits, I'm not sure. I'd be interested to know how those guys, whichever one you guys work with, how they would want to morph those together, because part of the Rural Housing Assessment Grant is that we do want to have two meetings. And I have told our boards, our chamber, and CIDC, and economic development stuff, that if we do this, we go down this road, and need the whites of your eyes at those meetings. So they know some are coming. Hopefully, we could do that. So that's pretty much it. But $2,500, I thought, was a pretty small penny to try to see if we can't figure out some other options to keep moving on the housing piece of that comprehensive plan. To me, I'd come to it as figuring out that is really our major stumbling block right now.
You used the word rural. You're talking, just city of Cresco, correct?
Correct. This was part of those rural initiatives that the governor rolled out and economic development rolled out. When I looked at it, everything they've done for the last, this is the fifth year that the programs have been in existence, and I have not come to you before that, because I really wanted to see, was there value there? We've had enough of our neighboring communities go through the process, and I've got some feedback that they said was very worthwhile. It's all been cities. It hasn't been a county to do it. So it's all been through the cities itself. It's just easier to get data and focus in on that, you know, and do all that. So that's why I'm here. I mean, it could be in Elma, but whatever. I think what we learned from doing this will be applicable to Elma and Corvina and Chester. Yes.
I couldn't understand from the write-up what the actual deliverable is. I mean, they have a nice picture of an online dashboard. Is that the deliverable, or what's the deliverable at the end of this?
I read that the deliverables to be new tools or funding opportunities that we could find. That's what I'm looking.
Define "tool," please.
Grants, opportunities to Serus is a function of Iowa State Extension.
Oh, okay.
So they're under Iowa State University. Oh, help me out on what that...
So this is a grant. Who's actually, Serus is actually doing the meetings?
Yes.
And what are they asking us? We all go to a meeting. What kind of questions do they ask us?
I don't, I haven't been through it, so I don't know. But what they discussed with me about is it's all going to be directly related to housing and initiatives that you guys can, that we can find to make any emphasis or any progress in the housing situations that we have today. So I would say, one of the things I talked to them about was what we just started with our housing revolving loan fund. They thought that was really cool, you know? And I'm sure they're going to use that in their presentations in other communities. So I'm hoping if you get some of that back from what they were looking at with other communities that they've done for the last four to five years.
Well, anything that can help us solve any piece of housing for $2,500, I'm in.
That's where I was at.
I would just like to know what, I would like, and I'm prepared to vote yes tonight, but somebody in this should say what the deliverable is.
Yeah. And again, I think most of that can come from the two public meetings that they host, and what a lot of that needs to be. I'm with you, though. I'm going in a little bit like, so we spend $2,500 to get 10 grand back, and if I can find a couple golden nuggets out of that to continue to figure out another tool for the housing market, I'm all for it. And if it works hand in glove with what we're doing for a comprehensive plan update, you know, it's just focused solely on housing, but that's a piece of your comp plan. That'll be a discussion. So my thought is that this could happen. When I've talked to them, it'd be tough, but this could happen maybe yet this year, late fall, if we got some meetings in before Christmas and before Thanksgiving. Could happen. If not, then like they were saying, it's probably better to shoot for January, February. The grant application is through grants.gov. We'll write the grant on your behalf. We'll do that like we always do. So when I've talked to one of the guys who is with the state of Iowa that's part of the grant committee, they have not ever had cities apply that did not get a grant. So he said, now, I can say that today, and that's a fact, and if we get 40 apply for this current round, then I'm going to have to lie to you and tell you, you know, whatever. But we've not had that. The max they've ever had is 10. Last year, they had five. And I think they plan for 10 to 15 every year. So he goes, everybody that's ever applied has been given a grant, so. And then the 10 grand that we get back, that you guys get back, all they ask is that it's earmarked, and this will be part of the process, earmarked towards a housing initiative, you name it. Don't know what it is. I said, well, easily, could we throw it in our housing revolving loan fund? Well, they love that whole thing. So they're like, well, sure, but if you think of something else, that's good, too. So.
So this would just be city people being able to apply for that $10,000?
No, it'd be your money to figure out what housing initiative you wanted to do. I mean, 10 grand isn't a lot of money. I would say, would it go towards, would you want to pay part of your comp plan from it? Maybe, I don't know. Would you want to refund your $2,500? Maybe. Put it back where you got it from. Would you want to put it in the housing revolving loan fund? Sure, I'd love that, even though it's only 10 grand. I'd love to put 80,000 more into that housing revolving loan fund. We have 250 right now, and we've got requests that are just starting to back up. So I'd love to see more into that, especially when rates keep doing this.
So dumb question, because I've never heard of the housing revolving loan fund. Can you touch on that?
Sure, I'd love to. That's probably something I should have talked to you guys before about, but I have been talking to our established housing committee. These guys do look for a housing committee. That's the nice thing, too, on this rural housing assessment grant, is that they ask you to formulate and create a committee like that. Well, there already won't exist. Amy comes to those meetings to represent you guys. But we did establish through the board supervisors and through Upper Explorer Land, through the Regional Housing Trust Fund, a fund of $250,000 to aid in the development of new housing speculatively. So we just ran a thing in the paper. Again, we just got done talking about how do you reach people? Obviously, we didn't reach everybody with the paper, but in the paper, it kind of identifies that we're looking for spec homes, or rental properties, or things where we don't know who the end user is going to be. What I don't want to do is Jan's going to build a brand-new house, and she knows the bank she's going to use, and we don't want to play with that. She's already got that figured out. What we want is somebody that's going to build a spec home that doesn't know who's going to be in there. Perfect, because there's a risk involved there. We want to lower that risk, give them some low-interest rate funds to help make that project happen, or else make it happen sooner than later, and make that housing available quicker. Rental housing is perfect. Talking to three different people about upper-story rentals downtown. This would be great to partner again with a bank, like we always do for our revolving loan funds that we do on the commercial side or business side. Just, we're diving into the housing, but I do not want to be a bank. That's not what we are. But if we can augment and help the project happen with a bank, yes. Because, hey, they're not building it today. We haven't built a rental property since, you tell me, 25 years, 30 years? It's not happening. Free market's not going to make it happen. So we're trying to figure out how are there tools that are available? That's what would be interesting to me, is there some other tools that we're missing out there that this type of rural housing assessment would maybe tell us? I'm open to learn new tricks.
I think when we spoke last week, there's the new condos going up south of the bowling alley. Most of those are spoken for that aren't even built yet.
Yep. And ones that haven't been broke ground on.
Yeah.
That are already spoken for.
And you said maybe a pair of duplexes that aren't even planned out yet, but people that want to buy them.
Correct. I think that's where we are. When we had our last housing meeting, Barb told us two?
Something like that.
Two homes on the market. Even though you see signs in yards, those aren't for sale. Those are already purchased. Russ already bought the one that's out on his property, and just the sign still stays there.
Right.
Because if they don't, realtors don't have a place to put a sign anymore, because there's nothing out there. So even though it's actually not even just sale pending, it's sold. But they don't put it out there, because they want you to call, so they can get you to call back when something does hit the market. But two homes are on the market. Two.
Well, as we were, what, a couple weeks ago?
Right. And she said one was going to have an offer any day. Yeah, you're right.
Well, I'll make the motion to apply, even though I don't quite understand the whole thing.
One second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do a roll call vote.
Just before we get into that.
Sure.
We applied for this grant. Pretty good odds we're going to get it. $2,500 goes toward it. We get $10,000 back. Net gain is $7,500. I mean, money goes back into the coffers, does it stay in toward them grants?
We would decide that at the time.
You have to decide that. Yep.
As long as it supports housing.
Yep.
Exactly.
Okay. Housing project.
I'm open to have it go for something that I don't know today, you know?
Yeah.
That maybe they teach us.
Any other questions? Motion made and seconded?
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Before we go on, I would need at least two people to be on the housing committee. So it sounds like you're already on it.
It'll have to be decided tonight.
Michelle would like it to be.
Well, I'm not going to commit to anything tonight, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I'm out enough right now.
I'll do it. And then how would you guys like the $2,500 to be paid? Lost, general?
My check.
My check?
[laughing]. Which one?
Well, don't we have a housing line in the budget? What's in that fund?
I would have to do some checking on that.
It may be empty, but I think we have a housing line.
Do some checking. Get back to you.
Okay. Next, Jason again, to update changes to Norman Borlaug Harvest Fest and Ridiculous Days locations and approval of permits.
We've been talking with Michelle and Nikki. I think we just wanted to throw these out here to make sure that we weren't missing anything. Pretty straightforward on your application, but A, Ridiculous Days. We are going to try to do Ridiculous Days. We've had a lot of requests from our downtown retailers that they really would like to try to do that. The best date that we've tried to figure out with the sidewalk project is this July 27th. That's a Thursday. I know weather can throw a wrench into anything, but forgetting about the sky falling, maybe they're done with the courthouse lawn by then and moving on to the CUSB block, and at that point in time, it'd probably affect one retail. So probably the best-case scenario, you know? When they flip to the other side of the street, that's not good. That's where a lot of the retailers are. Or when they flip to the far north side in Phase 3, they're going to hit a lot more. But if we can hit Ridiculous Days when they're kind of, maybe the courthouse is just about done, and they're ripping up in front of that Phase 2, that's about the best case. We'll just have to work around it. That's what we're all going to have to do, so. Can we go through them all over there?
So we'll have to approve each one individually, do you feel?
I would say yes.
Okay. So let's start with the one you just discussed. Approval of the street closing permit for portions of North Elm Street, North Park Place, South Park Place, and Second Avenue West for Ridiculous Day on July 27th, 2023.
I'll make the motion. Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
And do you want to talk about each one, or do you want us to just go through and approve them, and if there's questions?
The next one's real easy, because this one, we're saying we're not going to come downtown with the parade. We just want to do the homecoming route, start it from the school, bring it over, but not bring it down downtown, bring it a block shy, and bring it right by you guys, right out this window.
Okay.
So that would not put any kids downtown.
That's the approval of the parade permit for portions of Third Avenue East, Second Street East for the Norman Borlaug Harvest Fest Parade, August 26, 2023.
Second.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Next one is the approval of street closing permit for portion of North Elm, North Park Place, South Park Place, First Avenue East, and Second Avenue West for Norman Borlaug Harvest Fest on August 26, 2023.
So this gets more into the crews and trying to work around wherever they're at. So we think, you know, by the layout, they're probably on the north end of town by then. That's why we've added both park places. If they are there, North Park Place, I mean, we're going to be smart. We always are. And we also ask for more closures than I ever do. The guys are really good. Dean always calls me and leaves me the barricades, and I'll be honest, if I don't need them, I shorten it all up. But we always ask for more than we need. So if we're all over, you know, like North Park Place, then we'll be on South. We won't bug that. Most likely, a lot of the cars will take down Second, you know, in front of the theater and stuff like that, to just try to stay away from where it is, but yet utilize it in some way, shape or form. We've got on there also First Avenue, because that's part of CUSB's 135th that they're doing. So we've got that blocked off down there, so we really hope they're going to be done and gone from CUSB by then. And I think they're planning a lot more work themselves, too, so.
Sure. Any questions?
Second.
Carrie Ann Rich?
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
And the last one on that part is the approval of the street closing permit for portion of North Elm Street and for the Norman Borlaug Harvest Fest, August 25th through 27th, 2023, and the South Side parking lot, August 23rd through August 27th, 2023.
That's just where you put the tent.
Sorry.
Put the tent, yeah.
So moved. Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of application for tax abatement under the Urban Revitalization Plan for REN Properties LLC, and that's, Russ Nowak is here tonight.
Come on up, Russ. Russ and I have been talking for quite a while, so I'll let him do the talking from here, but it's been an absolute pleasure to work with this guy and his investment with Cresco Heating and Vent here in town. So Russ, you got it?
About three years ago, we acquired Darrell's Business, Cresco Heating Vent. We've grown ever since with additional staff, and we've outgrown our existing building. We're looking at, or we're starting our project, Creston High School, some track. We hope to add more jobs if we can find qualified people. We have fired the house next to it, but we'll end up fixing that up a little bit and renting that out for now, but it kind of squares off our commercial property.
Okay.
What is your, what's your plan? I mean, what do you think employee-wise down the road, three, four, five years, if you just had to grab a number?
So basically, when we acquired Darrell's Business, we had two. We have four now, if you count Randy that travels. We could easily use two, three more if we found qualified journeyman. So five years, you know, we're growing basically at a rapid pace, but it's the, we're actually bringing staff from our Marv Smith brand to help support the demand in Cresco. And it's been a really good niche working with contractors in Cresco, as, you know, with only two employees that Darrell had, it's pretty tough to do certain projects. We've been able to support each other's businesses. We've done work for the city. We've been at Featherlight. We've done several places of projects that Darrell probably wouldn't be able to do on his own. But we're continuing to look for additional staff. We actually started interviewing today for a front secretary at our new facility. Chrissy's going to take a different role inside of our company.
And if everything falls into place, you think November, you'll be up and running?
That's probably a dream. It's probably not December.
Yeah. But you'll have fireplaces and so on, too?
Yeah, we'll have fireplace showroom to complement our facility and decor. Big thing is inventory. Our trucks continue to get bigger, so Darrell's facility didn't allow us to house our newer trucks inside. We feel we have a buyer for our existing building ready to, so we're going to be patient until we can move out.
Yeah.
You know, we're using all local, a local bank, Cresco Building Services, local, Memertz is helping us do some of the site utilities. A lot of it, we're self-performing with our own goes, our own excavator and that type of equipment, but we want to grow as much as possible to support the community.
Good. I'll make that motion.
Second. So did you get our email about your request?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense?
Yep.
So what you guys would be...
I had to read it a couple times, to be honest. Yep. And then it sounds like when we start our Phase 2 next year, we'll just reapply.
Yep. So the current one is for 100% for three years.
It'd be on the main building and his storage shed, right?
I believe so.
So two buildings on this first one. And like Russ says, when you build in that next phase, it'll reapply.
Okay.
Yep. Basically, you know, with us acquiring almost four acres to try to find and utilize the rear part of the space, I called around Cresco and can't find an empty storage unit, two rents. So I feel this will be an added niche. Having full-time staff in our office is something that can, we can add. Already talked to the neighbors, great support. So they're actually going to help move the house that we acquired before we're able to rent it out, so. It's been a good niche.
I don't want to pretend in any way that this is a condition of the tax abatement, but I'm curious, given your expertise, are you going to try to sort of embody energy efficiency in the building that you're building and making that kind of a showplace?
Yep, so absolutely. So we'll use all heat pump style mechanical equipment, and we'll maximize the roof space. We'll actually put us over 100%. So we'll have solar on the roof as much as we'll fit.
Lots of insulation?
Yep. CBS, they use what they call a simple saber. So the old steel buildings used to probably only have about an inch across the top of the steel purlins. This fills the whole cavity, so. Don't interrupt me, I'm forty on the commercial building and be standing scene rough, so it'll last a long time.
Thank you. Okay, so who approved?
Rick made motion, second.
Okay. Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
I also just want to say I appreciate really needing Jason's support. This project would have probably took me a year in my current community where the support here and the investment we're making in the community really makes it an easy place to do business, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Russ.
Yep.
Thank you.
Bring some of your friends over from Decor.
Okay, next, discuss Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Catalyst Grant Award for the theater, scene shop, and possible motion to accept the grant and proceed with the project. So are you folks here to come and talk, too?
Actually, I wanted to bring it up. I talked with Michelle, I came in on Friday and talked with Michelle about it. There are several other people that wanted to come in and voice their support for the project, but as you know, the theater right now is getting ready for their play. So CCT wasn't able to be here. But on top of that, we don't have the contract yet. We've been notified that we've been approved, but we don't have the contract listing out the nitty-gritty. With that, I'd actually like to table it until our next meeting. I know we wanted to move forward and get the ball rolling, but we have an ambiguous date right now that's not in black and white. So if we have the contract by the time of the next meeting, I'd like to do that then personally. And that way, we also have the people here that want to discuss and talk and be a part of the conversation regarding the catalyst grant.
And I mean, I think it's inappropriate to vote to accept a grant that we don't have the contract for.
Yeah, okay. All right, so any other questions or discussion on that? Six is tabled. Number seven, resolution authorizing transfer of funds for fiscal year 2024, the July transfers.
So moved. Second.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number eight, review quotes for excavation contract for July 1, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, and possible award of contract.
I don't know if you guys looked at the spreadsheet that?
I would like to comment that whoever put the spreadsheet together, that was very useful. Thank you. Sorry, interrupted.
Stole it from somebody. I had it shared with me, actually, so I just used it. But I would say, I would recommend going with Memers, has the little bit, their little quote.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Number nine, discuss new website and posting of council packets.
We are about to roll out a new website for the city due to making it ADA compliant. We had to make some changes. IROC is doing it, they do eight other cities, and none of them are putting the council packet on there. So we just need to know if you guys are okay with not having it on there. They only do the minutes and the agendas.
But what does that have to do with ADA? The packets are in the same format as the agenda.
There's a lot of charts and diagrams in ours, and they are very difficult to transcribe because it'll be going only words. They have to be copied and pasted in, and it will be only words.
Because basically with the ADA, if you have a chart or a picture?
It'll be reading, so our website will be where it can be read to you.
Right.
So that stuff can't be read. We need to go, it's got to be voiced to text or text to voice.
And we are obligated to be ADA required or compliant?
It opens us as a city open to litigation because we're not compliant.
So I just need to make sure you guys are okay with that?
If you want them on there, we'll find a way, but it does open us up to litigation.
So if we have them on there, we will not be ADA compliant?
They'll be PDF, which means they won't be, they won't be read.
Right, but so if we have the packets on there, the whole website will not be ADA compliant? Or will it be just the packets?
The complete website will not be ADA. Everything that's going to go up right now will be ADA compliant other than the packets, because we can't, like, pictures have been condensed. The charts and drawings and whatnot like that can't be completely transcribed.
Is there any way, so now I'm looking at Nikki, because honestly, I go on the website and look at those packets relatively frequently.
I do, too.
I do, too.
To just, in what's posted, just have a blank page or something like that available to City Hall.
That's a you question.
I would assume we could do that.
I mean, because I would really like to see the pack, as much as we can put up, if the packets be available.
Could we put it up? I just opened up Word. Could we put it in as a Word document? Because there is, under Review, it says Read Loud. It's a speech thing on Word right now.
It would just be, it won't be Word, because then not everybody has Word.
Oh.
Because, and we can't make people have to buy an app or download something. So then we can, I mean, that, removing any, we can just put it in there, something that's saying, add their, like, charts and diagrams removed, contact City Hall. Because we can't make people buy a program to.
And with Word, I mean, you don't want to leave it open for people to alter what we put out there.
True.
I do, like you said, I do go and read them, too. I don't know what the fines and violations are for not being ADA compliant, but I mean, it's obviously important, too, so. Do we have to decide tonight?
Well, we're ready to go live.
We're ready to go live. It's been ready. We tabled it so that you guys can talk about it.
And I mean, if we had to wait two more weeks, is that, how does the world end if we wait two more weeks?
It's paid for, we really should go live.
Right, but.
Well, I mean, I guess I would like you to try, I mean, to investigate whether that's possible. I mean, my, let's see, discuss, so we don't have to have a motion. If that's possible, I guess what we're hearing is people would like to try that.
Would you be open to having the council packets put on like a Google Drive where you guys could access it? So it's not necessarily on the website, but it's still accessible to you?
Does that reduce the amount of information available to the public? I mean, I'm all for public information.
If it's going to be there, it's going to be, or it should be.
Let me just put it, I'll see what she says tomorrow, and we can send the email.
Is there a beta site location that we could look at?
Is this ready, right?
It's not completely current. I mean, it's not current because it's been sitting.
It's waiting.
I'll go, I'll send it. I don't have it.
Okay. So I did do some checking, and we're one of the only cities who actually do put the council packets out there.
Yeah, I've actually noticed that. That doesn't mean we have to become worse because.
I agree, right. I mean, I, yeah, I guess see what you can come up with. To me, if we have to wait two more weeks until we meet again, I don't see that as being a big deal, I guess, myself, but.
Can you tell on that, how many hits you get on that site?
We can put that, we can add it.
But I mean, do we know, have we been tracking it going backwards? Do we know how many people actually use that website? How many, how many openings a day or week or month?
It's not checked currently that I'm aware of, but when you do that, that's tracking every single time I open it to edit it, and every single time she opens it to edit.
It tracks that, yeah.
It's not truly accurate.
Okay, so we don't know how many times the public actually goes and pulls up the Cresco website, puts that in, utilizes that information.
They should track, they should track individual users.
It would track that, it should.
It is not, I've built websites, it's not ever going to be truly accurate because it's not, it doesn't track that.
But it's close.
Every single time any person clicks on it. So if it's set, if you click, if you shut your computer off and you turn that on and you go back to it, Gary, it's going to track you. You shut your computer off and you go back to it, it's going to track you as another user.
So, I mean.
Right.
Yeah. So, but it's good, that's what I've been saying, it's not every, it's not a truly accurate count. But we send people to our website daily to pay their water bills. I mean, I probably told six people this afternoon alone to go pay their water bills there because people call and want to pay us over the phone, and we're not allowed to do that, so we send them through there and we physically walk them through that. So it is a huge tool just for us getting paid because unfortunately, not everybody will take, will do an ACH. So that's a huge tool there. And then we're sending people there to register for Kessel rentals, for Champlin rentals. So those things alone that are drawing money in for the city, those are huge things for us. And Kessel is booked out through 2025 right now, so, yeah.
Full?
No, not full, but I'd say May, June, July, pretty well. Because if you bring a key in, most of the people are wanting to book.
Most, that's graduations and weddings, right?
Nikki, when's Abby's graduation party?
2025.
Yep.
And you booked it?
Last year.
Yeah.
We need to build another lodge up here, is what we need to do.
Soon and Nate will be booking his kids' graduation parties.
Pretty soon-ish. So where are we at with the website, then?
I will email you all the, the site that is in holding. I have to edit a air conditioning schedule for TCC.
Superb, thank you.
All right, yep, thank you. Number 10, motion to declare public purpose for the $3,888 payment to Northeast Iowa Community Action in accordance with the 2080 agreement. And I'm going to read this, is that what I'm doing? In the highlighted. And the public purpose is the goals of advancing community development and improving social and economic conditions for individuals and families with limited resources in Howard County and the city of Cresco, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
McConnell?
Number 11, motion to declare.
Did we do number seven?
Yes.
Okay, I must have missed that one.
I thought we did.
We did. Number 11, motion to declare public purpose for the $1,250 payment to Helping Services in accordance with the 2080 agreement. And that public purpose is providing substance abuse and domestic abuse services.
So moved.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Number 12, review applications and Cresco Tourism Advisory Committee recommendations and award of hotel motel tax grants.
Do you read these?
I can, drawn a blank if I did or not last time.
I'm not sure either.
I don't think we usually read the whole thing. I mean, the recommendation is $5,000 for.
Right, so the, was that the only applicant? So the applicant for the second quarter is the Norman Borlaug Harvest Fest, asking $5,000. And they recommended the $5,000, yeah.